Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, city staff, invited guests and all who are watching. Wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the presence of our deputy city manager, Dr. Coleman, our city attorney, attorney Levonda Graham Williams, my colleagues on council, and I want to recognize our deputy city clerk, Ms. Anita Sharad. Thank you all for being with us today. We will begin with asking Ms. Sharad to call the role, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Dodson.
Here.
Mr. Hugel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. I will move on with Mr. Well, Dr. Coleman, our deputy city manager. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We have two presentations tonight. One will have a presentation from Dr. Russell, who's our director of planning. She will discuss the use permit extensions. And our second presentation will be from our chief of police, Chief Jenkins. And he will talk about crime stats and our new crime dashboard. And so I'm looking for Dr. Russell now. I know she's here. There she is.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Dr. Russell.
So let me just start briefly with just an explanation for the provisions of the Portsmouth-Virginia zoning ordinance that permits the applicant that had made their request for the use permit extension. So the section forty dash two, five thirty-three, section K three, provides that for a conditional use permit that is approved by city council, an applicant has exactly twenty-four months to start construction of their project. And if they have not started construction, meaning they've received a building permit and have started the foundation of one of the structures for the approved project, they have thirty days before the use permit expires to make a request for an extension. And so that is why those applications are here before you this evening. During COVID, the General Assembly approved an additional extension for all approved development projects through July 1, 2025. So projects that were within that timeframe that would have expired before 2025 had some additional time to move forward. You have three conditional use permit applications on your agenda this evening. We did receive a request this afternoon from Tyler Rosa.
Yeah, I'll be a pass.
With William and Mullins to asking your permission to defer their request for use permits numbers twenty-one oh three and twenty-one oh nine until your next meeting, which would be your June twenty-fourth meeting, that work session. And so the request that is before you for action is by Mr. Ron Holloway, use permit number twenty-three oh seven. And at this point, Mayor Glover, I'd like to defer to Mr. Holloway to permit his extension request.
Right, you go on there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, normally, normally during our work session, we don't permit public comment. That usually happens at the regular city council meeting. This is a work session, so if he is presenting, because I didn't see that on our agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not, the use permit is not on our agenda. So there has to be a process taken before we can present an extension for a use permit. Can we confirm that, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Because normally, I think there has to be some type of notification in the newspaper and therefore to be put on the agenda that there's a process.
Correct.
So it will have to go through that process.
Yes, that is correct. And Dr. Russell, are you able to continue with your presentation?
I am.
Yes, please do that.
So Mayor Glover, members of council, the plan is to, with your permission, to include this as a council request on your next city council agenda. Mr. Carter asked that we present these items because it's new for you. Your first two were approved last month relative to process. And so Mr. Holloway's request, I actually noted earlier this week that they've started some earthwork movement and moving the concrete.
Sure.
Their Deep Creek Boulevard project is a proposed townhouse development.
I just can't, give me a point of order, just one second. I want to be clear about what we're doing here. This is not for you all to vote on today.
Correct.
This is similar to a presentation of information for you to start to just bat things around amongst yourselves. It will not be open to the public. That information can be, at your discretion, presented by Dr. Russell or and/or the applicant. The applicant would be subject to questions, as would normally happen, but that doesn't preclude them for when they're on the actual work agenda, the business agenda, from also being questioned more. And so you have the ability to hear from him today, if you so please. And then it would be placed after notice and all the required things, as Mayor indicated, at the appropriate business meeting.
I think, thank you for clarifying that. But I think in the presence of the company and all who are here, in order for us to continue in a consistent manner with our actions and how we handle these matters, I think it would be appropriate to do it at the business session and not this session, to hear from the applicant.
Very well. The project was approved, Mayor Glover, members of council, in June of 2023, and the applicant is asking for a one-year extension to July 2026. Staff is in support of that proposed action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Russell. We will now move into our second presentation, which will be given by Chief Jenkins, our chief of police for the city of Pitt.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Just going through, there is a, one part of the presentation that's actually going to get, have to get you the update for the actual violent crime numbers itself. There's going to be one that says property crimes and one that says, and they're both the same slot. So I'll get you that update before we leave today.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, so again, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you on our current stats year-to-date as it relates to our crimes within the city. So tonight, we're going to obviously discuss our crime statistics, some of our newest public safety initiatives that we are embarking upon. Going to give a brief description of them and discuss our new gun violence dashboard, and then finally talk to you all about Calea, our Calea accreditation. Now, so for our property crimes year-to-date, as it stands right now, we are at a twenty-two-point-two percent deficit as it relates to our property crimes for the year. Obviously, that is something good. We're about, just about three hundred, above three hundred incidents decrease from this year, this year compared to the last year this time. And so obviously, we are, when we look at our numbers related to what's currently driving the biggest gain for us are burglaries to detachable sheds and also our domestic-related incidents related to larcenies, boyfriends stealing from girlfriends, you know, I'm no longer in the house, things of that nature. And so, so we're trending in a very good direction as it relates to our property crimes. As you would remember, our overall goal for the year was to have a twenty percent reduction in overall crimes, ten percent reduction in violent crimes. So again, this is, this says violent crimes. And as I stated, I will get you the numbers related to that. However, as it relates to our violent crimes right now, we stand at a eleven percent, eleven-point-five percent increase in violent crime. Now, our crime drivers for us and for violent crimes include our brandishing of firearms and our firearms or plated weapons, which would equate to aggravated assault. Our shooting into occupied dwellings is about a seventy-three percent increase. And in addition to that, we have an increase in rate. Again, the highest number for us too right now are the aggravated assaults, shooting into occupied buildings at a seventy-three percent increase and the brandishing of firearms. Tremendous amount of individuals just pulling guns and again, understanding what brandishing is. If a person has a firearm and if a person feels threatened by that firearm, that is considered brandishing, all right? You don't have to deliberately point a firearm to at a person in order for it to be considered brandishing. So one of the initiatives that we talked, that I will discuss as it relates to how we are looking to address that, we'll talk about in our public, in our initiatives. So as it relates to where we are year-to-date right now, overall, and this is our overall crime, total crimes for the year, is right now, we are at a eighteen percent reduction in incidents, nineteen-point-two-five reduction in actual victims. Obviously, the one that always gets the most notoriety is our homicides. And so year-to-date, right now, we're at a, almost a seventy percent reduction in homicides, twenty-three victims last year compared to seven victims this year. While we're talking about this, I do want to take the opportunity to talk about a couple of incidents that we had happen most recently. One of those incidents was the incident on Viking Street. That incident started as a graduation party that was attended by mostly high school students celebrating their graduation. And I won't get into which school was mostly affected. What we do know is that that celebration was attended mostly by Portsmouth residents. We did have some Chesapeake, we did have some Norfolk that was there as well. From information that we got from our neighbors that live in that particular area, everything was going very well up until the point when it was not. There was not any adult presence out there at all. We had individuals ranging from fifteen all the way up to twenty-one, twenty-two years of age that was out there. At some point, we did have what we know is individuals either that were there or approached the party and began to shoot firearms, striking at least four, what we, for all we possess purposes, innocent victims. Thankfully, those, all four of them are expected to make a full recovery. And we've been diligently working on that ever since it took place. We've re-canvassed that area at least three times, finding at least four different calibers of shell casings at the scene, which tells us there were at least four shooters that were there shooting different firearms. We do have some bring camera video. In addition to, we're looking to locate some potential witnesses. So the obviously chaotic scene, the, as hearing it myself on the radio as it was going off, there were multiple officers that were already in the area and being called to the area from various, working various part-time assignments to assist. Obviously, when you have a scene like that where you have individuals that it happened in one place and then they start to scatter, so the locations start to change and they, the officers are happening upon these individuals who are looking for assistance. And at one time, we thought we had eight individuals. Then we thought we had two individuals. But finally, we were able to get confirmation that we had four individuals. Those individuals range in age from sixteen years old to twenty years of age. A sixteen, two sixteen-year-olds, one eighteen-year-old, and one twenty-year-old. Three females and one male who were struck. So we have identified some potential suspects that we are in the process of trying to track down for interviews. But again, we're still looking for witnesses to this. And so we are obviously, we're asking the public for assistance as it relates to that particular incident. Later, the next day, we had a incident that took place where another juvenile was shot, and that was reported. What was not reported is the individuals were inside the home playing with a firearm. One juvenile shot another juvenile accidentally. And again, it's important to highlight the facts as it relates to these things that took place so that we don't, we just add credibility to what's going on within the city. And obviously, we had one last night that we're still actively investigating. A lot of those facts are not, a lot of those facts are not really adding up to some of the information that was supplied to us by the victim. Shell casings found inside of his car, as he's saying he was shot from outside of his car, things of that nature. So I'm comfortable with putting that information out because I want folks to understand what we're dealing with as it relates to crime within the city. All right, so just a conversation, so an educational point so that individuals understand how our technology and the investments that you all have made as a city council and how we've made investments as a police department have began to pay dividends for us. Last week, we had a shooting that took place during the day, June fourth, at approximately one-twenty, one-twenty-two in the afternoon. We received a gunshot notification from our Flock system stating that we had gunshots in the area. And it was followed up by citizens calling about gunshots, gunshots being heard. One of the things that's important to note why this gunshot detection is so important is because when individuals call, when they call, they hear gunshots from wherever they are, but their address is the one that's logged. So I can be calling from Main Street and I heard the gunshots and it happened, you know, maybe a half mile away. This gunshot detection, the way that it works is it triangulates those, the shots based on, and it gives us a pinpoint of the area that needs to be searched. When officers arrived in that particular area, they did identify an individual who stated that he was involved in a shootout with another individual. We were able to utilize, at that, at that particular area, we also have one of our portable trailer cameras that we had stuck there because that was a area that the civic league had been complaining about. This is the White Store on Deep Creek Boulevard. We were able to pull up the cameras there and the camera actually recorded the entire incident, including the description of the individual, the vehicle they was driving, things of that nature. We were able to use our license plate readers to get an identification on that and be able to look for that individual. Within less than two hours, we were able to identify both the, both suspects who had exchanged gunfire with each other and had all of the necessary information to be able to infect and arrest on them. Both of those individuals were arrested and received no bond for shooting within the, within the city. And so it's important for us to highlight that, that investments and how those things are paying off for us. And obviously, we want to continue to profile when these things, things happen for us. All right, so some of our new public safety initiatives that we are, are dealing with is, we're calling it social media's most wanted and larceny suspects. We're also going to talk about a new unit that we have. It's called the SAVE Unit. And then one of another new initiative is a monthly officer community problem solving project. So I'm calling this Lights Camera Action. It's, it's very simple, okay? We are going to be aggressive with highlighting all of our bad behaviors within the city, all right? Folks that go into a grocery store and steal, folks that go into the ABC store and take items. Because again, one of the things that our retail folks talk to us about a lot is about the level of stuff that's being taken from, from their store. And so we want to be very aggressive about how we address those particular things. And so we're going to be partnering with our local businesses and asking them to provide all the information that they can, video. And we're going to be putting these things out on a weekly basis, asking for information of these individuals. Now, obviously, what we have is, we have video of the individual taking, taking the item. We just need identification from that. And so we'll be using Crime Line, assistance for reward with information. And again, just profiling these, these situations. And again, this will be mainly be done social media-driven. We continue to partner with probation and parole and getting from them a monthly top ten wanted list of absconders and individuals who violated probation. On a daily basis, we probably have an average of about two thousand, and that's probably conservative, individuals who have active warrants within the city. And those warrants can be anything from failure to appear in court all the way up to some of the most heinous situations that we are actively looking at, looking for. Obviously, some of them, some individuals don't know that they're wanted. And so it can be something as simple as a phone call, hey, you got a warrant. Most folks that are responsible will come down, turn themselves in and address their, their personal business. Some other folks know that they're wanted and they're doing everything to evade capture from the police. And those are the ones that we have to do warrant sweeps. We have to do vehicle checks, stop checkpoints, and then partner with some of our federal partners, potentially sheriff's officers to go out and do warrant checks on individuals to see if we can't get some of those folks in custody. So again, we're going to be driving this, this particular endeavor mainly through our social media platform. And you should start seeing those things popping up relatively regularly within the next two weeks on our social media site. All right, so new unit that we put together, it's a partnership with a gentleman who came down who wanted to basically get his name out. He was a part of a, a different company is now branched out. And so he was looking for a police department to, to come in and partner with and offer his services. Sat down with him, had some dialogue, and decided it was something that we could, could look at. Now, remember, earlier in the presentation, we talked about the brandishing, how those brandishings were up. I can tell you traditionally, across the country and within this police department, if you have a situation where a person pulled a gun on you, nine times out of ten, if that person did, we would tell you it's a crime not committed in our presence. You can have every right to go down and take a warrant out on that individual. Or if an individual had been shot, what my experience is, in most cases, is we can go to the hospital, we'll say, hey, what happened to you? That person will say, I don't know. We said, who shot you? I don't know. Where'd you get shot? I don't know. And so at some point, we as a police department, having so many other things to deal with, we'll say, well, whenever you're ready to cooperate or if you want our assistance, give us a call back. Well, one of the things that we've decided is that we can't, we can't continue in that realm. Every single shooting has to have some level of scrutiny on it. Today's brandishing turns into Mrs. Smith's vehicle getting shot up tomorrow, which later turns into a shooting or a potential homicide. Sometimes those pieces in between gets missed because we're not always aware that this brandishing is tied to this, this vehicle getting shot up. So we're really diving into paying attention to the lowest level crimes as it relates to gun violence. And that's what this unit here is tasked with dealing with. This is, excuse me, strategic anti-violence enforcement. And so when we have those reports of a brandishing that takes place, then we're going to have specifically, these group of officers are going to look at each individual report. And if we can arrest someone, we will take the charge out, all right? And then that person will come in. We're not relying on that individual to go and get the charge because nine times out of ten, they've either made a determination that they're not going to deal with it or they've made a determination that we're going to deal with it, but in our own terms. And so by us stepping in and taking the charge out, now we're inserting ourselves into it and potentially stopping that next level of crime from happening. And so we started this at the end of April. And right now, we've got, we've been able to do about a fifty percent decrease in just in that timeframe. We're talking about, about forty police reports that we've been able to look at with just the brandishing, where we've been able to go back and officially charge somebody as it relates to that. And so we're hoping that this is going to pay some long-term dividends for us as it looks to, as we look to curb the rest of just individuals taking guns, pointing guns at folks, and then hopefully, which will in turn drive down our numbers for aggravated assaults and gun, and shooting. All right, so monthly officer community problem solving. So again, simple concept. Every police officer is going to have a project, all right? So we have officers right now that, some of them, their thought is their primary job is calls for service, and that is very true. Their jobs are calls for service. You pick the phone up, the police come out. But there is opportunity for dead time between calls for service where we can be a little bit more focused on those particular issues. And so we are mandating each officer have a project. So what do those projects look like? So let's just say Mr. Moody has a problem in his neighborhood, and I work in that neighborhood, with vehicles being illegally parked. That might be a project that I take, take on. And so what I want to know is Steve Jenkins, who works that neighborhood, is going to be addressing those problems. And he has one month to address those problems in that neighborhood. And at the end of that month, he's going to be submitting a report about all of the issues that he addressed in that neighborhood. Now, that problem, either is it fixed or do we need to continue that along? Now, taking another example, say we have a individual that's operating a broady house or a bootlegger or something of that nature. Well, we're encouraging officers, and it's traditionally done at night, we're encouraging officers that work opposite platoons that they will partner together to address this particular issue. And again, now we know focus on, we got two officers directly focused on those particular issues. Now, we're also encouraging those officers to partner with those other departments within the city that have enforcement actions or things that can help them. Those things include zoning code enforcement, maybe Department of Health, things of that nature. We had some success here relatively lately, relatively recently as it relates to one of our businesses, and I won't mention, mention the name. But it wasn't the law enforcement action that actually closed that business. It was actually the Health Department that came in and addressed the issues that were there. So again, it's all of us getting to the table and then addressing the issues from our, our specific expertise. But again, the officers will be driven with handling these individual problems. And of course, the supervisors will monitor. And then it will also give me an opportunity to know what those issues are and then try to kind of drive some of the messaging in that. Things like aggressive panhandling, things like tents. And I don't know if any of y'all noticed, in the pilot, I had been wondering where some of, it seems like we got an influx of people on the street panhandlers and where they came from. So I don't know if you noticed, but in the pilot, just here the other day, and again, not saying, there was about a hundred. A, our local city had done about a hundred evictions of folks living in tents within their city. And so I would suspect that some of those folks have made their way, made their way here. I would encourage you to go to the pilot and take a look at it. So obviously, we are, we are aware of that issue. We are working on that right now to address some of our folks offering services all, also. But of course, making it known that, that level of behavior is not going to be tolerated here in Portsmouth. All right, so talking about our new crime dashboard. So talk about our new crime dashboard. This was launched about a month and a half, month and a half ago. We are one of the few cities across the country to actually have a gun violence dashboard. Now, what does this do for us? This gun violence This gun violence dashboard actually allows us to get real-time incidents that, as it relates to shootings that have occurred within our city. And I'm actually going to go to the dashboard, so you can actually take a look at it. All right. So, as you'll see, this information is last updated 7:14 a.m., today's date. Here on the side, you're able to stroll down each one of the neighborhoods that we have assigned within the city, and what you'll notice is, here is how many days that those particular areas have gone without a shooting incident, okay? Why is this important? Often, we hear people are getting shot every single day, right? The reality of it is, is not, people are not getting shot every single day, okay? And that information, you all need to know, but not just you, the folks that we have in our community that are assisting us through our nonprofits, through our other departments, it's important for them to know where exactly they need to be, to be able to look at into these incidents. You can look at shootings by neighborhood, you can also look at here, which is very, I think that tells a lot. Sunday, for us, is our most violent day, for whatever reason. We have more shootings that occur on Sunday as it compares to any other day, our lowest being Tuesday. Some of the other information that you will see, stolen firearms year-to-date. Right now, we sit at 72 stolen firearms year-to-date, and then you'll see the sign, whether this was stolen out of vehicle, whether this is all other crimes, so this could have been stolen from, somebody could have dropped it, somebody misplaced it, but we try to dive down, this was actually a robbery, somebody actually took that person's firearm, they reported being robbed of that firearm. Again, if you click around in here, the next part of this map gives you real-time information as it relates to our information, year-to-date comparison of shootings that have taken place, whether there's been a change in that, increase, decrease, and then again, where those, how that looks in relations to where the incidents are happening across the city, along with number of victims, again, gunshots being reported, again, anything related to shootings, gun violence, again, trying to educate the public on what gun violence looks like for us, and then trying to find viable solutions on how we address it. So you can find this on the Portsmouth Police Department website, if you search under Crimes tab, stroll to the bottom, it will say Gun Violence Dashboard again, and it's open to anyone, and I encourage folks to go on and play around with it, just to, again, educate yourself on the information that's there. All right. Going to talk about Kalia. So we've spent a lot of time talking about accreditation, and so, we had started accreditation process about two years ago. It's been a long process. Kalia is an international accreditation group that goes in and looks at police departments, they're invited, and they come in and look at a police department from the stance of, what are our best practices across the country? And not only do they offer suggestions on how to fortify your policies for improvement that makes you a better department, but they also help to address some of these things, like controlling your liability insurance costs, administrative improvements, again, things that we all want. Gives us opportunity for better relations with the community, gives us opportunity for, to understand accountability within the organization, and then, of course, one of the big things, good, sound policies and procedures limit your risk for liability exposure. And so, we had this entity come in and look at all of our policies. We went after a National Advanced Accreditation. Currently, and I know I stated, there are about 22 advanced accredited police departments in the state of Virginia, about 77 Kalia certified across the, 77 in Virginia. We will, we will be going to Arkansas, and, which is where the conference is, be going there in August. We had not only our online assessment, but our in-person assessment, and did outstanding job on both. Shout out to Ms. Tanya Hopkins, who was our Kalia accreditation manager, but every single police officer detective supervisor within the department. This has been something that, at least in my time, that we've all talked about getting done, but as a department, for the first time in history, we will be a nationally accredited police department. And so again, something that we can celebrate as we continue to improve. All right, in closing, any questions that I can answer for you all?
Chief Jenkins, thank you for this presentation. It's good to see that crime is down overall. I just have a question in regards to aggravated assaults, and it could, I guess my question is, we're seeing a decrease in homicides, we've seen a 30% increase in aggravated assaults, and that includes shooting. Does the flock gun start detection have something to do with that?
Well, yes and no, and I think there is a, one of the things that we have to kind of, aggravated assaults, unfortunately, when you, when they're coupled together, that is the breaking of the skin. So again, a person can punch you, it's considered aggravated assault, it gets coupled in the same. We've had a tremendous amount of increase in stabbings, which most are related to domestic related incidents. So it's not all gun violence situations, but one of the things I would like to say, but I can't, you know, can't tie it to, and I want that, that our flock is deterred some of that, but I do know, as it relates to investigations-wise, it is really helping us with being able to close these investigations a lot sooner, giving us those leads that we often so desperately sometimes don't get from the community, sometimes they don't know, don't want to know, don't want to cooperate, but it's given us an opportunity. But the aggravated assaults are tricky, you know, if anybody's paying attention, we don't, we don't have the number of shootings this year that we had compared to last year, but we do have the uptick still there, and maybe it's just folks putting their guns down and fighting it out. If that's the case, I'll take that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Moody, and then Councilwoman Thomas.
Chief, thank you for the presentation, very informative. Unsolved crimes, particularly unsolved murders. How do we address, do we actually have personnel that work those cases on a daily basis? And is there a systematic way that we touch base with the victims' families periodically? Or is that, are we proactive in that communication, or must the family call the department to get updates?
Yes, sir, and I'm going to be completely honest with you, it's always been a, the communication has always been a problem, even when I was in homicide. When you have a cold case, and a cold case usually is considered no leads on a case within a year's time. And so, and sometimes those cases go cold, you know, within a couple of weeks. And so, of course, one of the issues is that the volume of incidents that we have within the city, sometimes a case becomes cold when the newest case comes in. And so, it is, it is hard to sometimes be able to keep all of these things in proper perspective and understand that there is still a family that's out there that wants regular updates. It's one of the things I have been trying to work on with detectives, to be able to go back and sit down and take a day, and just go back, update all your cases, make the necessary phone calls that are there, and if there is nothing, at least the family deserves to hear that there's nothing, so that they don't feel like that they're kind of left out there. Sometimes those calls come to me as a chief, I have to go in and look and see if there's any update, or call to see if there's an update, or just say, "Hey, can y'all give this person a phone call?" We do have a couple of retired part-time individuals who've come back onto the department, who are specifically assigned to work in cold cases. And again, it can be just, this case was close to being solved, but now that detective is retired, so that might get assigned to that individual. I could probably tell you, with the advances that we've had today in technology, if I had the staff, and I really would like to take some time with just sending off some of those old cases for DNA and for NIVEN, which is our gunshot analysis or casing analysis, because some of those guns very well may be sitting in somebody's property in evidence, attached to a suspect who may be in jail. But it really is about having the personnel and time to be able to sit down and do a proper analysis of these cases, of these cases. And so, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and just tell you, "Oh yeah, we do," I'm just going to be very transparent, we're nowhere near where we would want to be, or where I would want to see them in the way that we communicate with our victims, but we are trying to improve on it.
So we need more manpower to make that?
It would be helpful, not just, well, I was going to say it would be helpful, yes, sir, we need more manpower, but, you know, one of the things that we, and we talked about power engage, one of the frustrations we get often from citizens is, "Hey, I called in, I was involved in a traffic accident, called 911, you said you were sending somebody, and I didn't hear anything, I haven't heard anything but thing from anybody, and it's been two hours." You know, one of the things that we have coming on board, and hopefully it'll be slated to be implemented before the end of the fiscal year, is power engage, and the way that that works is, a person calls 911, they receive a list of instructions, and then when that call is officially assigned to an officer, they're sent a text message with an update that says, "Hey, Officer Jenkins is in route." And then after that call is over, then there is a opportunity for that person to go in and rate the service by that officer. What I'm hoping is, a couple of things, one, it will increase citizens' awareness of what's going on with their cases, but also give the opportunity for feedback and let the officers know how they're being perceived in the community. It is important as we look at morale building internally, but also making sure that citizens know that we are trying to be responsive. When there's a case that's assigned that has a report number, they're going to be notified of when there are updates to their case, and when that case is closed, or something of that nature. So again, using technology to kind of take some of that, take some of that on this off, you know, of having somebody to do it, but in the end, I still want somebody to physically pick the phone up and say, "Hey, this is where we are with your case," and that's the ultimate goal.
And Chief, I really want to salute you on that dashboard, because, you know, many times, perception versus reality are miles apart, so, you know, if we can direct people to the facts that are updated, did you say that's updated how often?
It's updated daily.
Daily?
Yes, sir.
That's a great tool for us to present the facts, you know, there's only one set of facts, so if we can get people to do that and share that, I think that'll help change that perception that, you know, we're the OK Corral or something, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, thank you for your leadership of that department, and the technology that you've brought to it is really a game changer, I think, in fighting crime.
It is, one of the things that we want to combat is the perception, and, you know, it's really about making people, how do you feel? You know, do you feel safe in your area? And that's really what it's about. We can, I can tell you shootings are down, but if I don't feel safe, what I say doesn't matter. And that's what this is really about, is making people feel safe in their area. You know, I think one of the bad parts about social media is when you go on the Voices of Portsmouth or Nextdoor, if it happened in Mr. Sillidge's house, it might as well happen at my house, it's crime all the time. And that's the thing that, that's all what you see all the time, and it's unfortunate, but it's one of those things that is an opportunity for us to kind of educate just a little bit, that it may have just happened at his house, and you're not necessarily a victim in your particular area. And also, it also gives others understanding of why we spend more time in certain areas as opposed to others, because it clearly shows where we need to be.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I agree, echo what Vice Mayor Moody just said about the dashboard, having that, you know, just that data behind it. I had a chance to kind of look at it before this meeting, and I already saw, like you said, it was updated daily, saw the, kind of, it was the numbers in there from the incident this past weekend, so definitely encourage our citizens, and I think it's a useful tool for us to have to really understand where our hot areas are and so forth. One thing I did, well, I have more than one question, but my first question, because you just mentioned it regarding public perception, and yes, our numbers are down, which is a great thing, but also, when you say, "How do you feel, do you feel safe?" You mentioned in the dashboard that we do track, I guess, just gunshots, like, or how, where is that under, what category? Like, let's say I'm a citizen, and I just hear a gunshot, like you said, in the vicinity, and I call it in, how, where do we track that type of incident?
It is tracked on the dashboard.
Okay.
It's on the, right, go back, please. It is tracked on the dashboard, it's on the second tab.
Okay.
And so, one of the things that's important to note is, this is only tracking from incidents that are, where people call in, this is not gunshot detection, because again, they're two different systems.
Okay.
This information comes straight from our CAD data, right? And so, I want to make sure people understand that this isn't us going in and saying, "We're going to add one here and take away one there." This information...
You just started, the internet just started going crazy.
This information comes specifically from our CAD data. So, the information that you have here on your right is gunshots heard, and that were called in, and again, it's kind of similar.
It increases on Sunday, okay.
Sunday, you know, and then, and here on Saturday, and, you know, so, if you, if we go back and look here, similar in conversation, again, the weekend is, you know, obviously folks are more out, things of that nature, so, but it is tracked under the second tab with NiV's crime.
Thank you for showing me that, and I think that's important, because, you know, like you said, like, do you feel safe? It might not have resulted in a gunshot wound or gunshot incident, but if you, I mean, I've been in this situation where I lived prior, if you live in an area that has a lot of gunshots, your nerves get bad, you get nervous, your kids get nervous, and so you might not have been the victim per se, but your surroundings, you know, where you have to keep your head on a swivel type thing, kind of make you feel unsafe. So I just, I'm glad that we're tracking that, because I would do my part and call it in, like, "Hey, I heard a gunshot," so. Then my other question, you mentioned very early, thank you for giving the update about the incident this past weekend with the graduation party. School is out, and I know we have a curfew. How do we enforce that curfew? How is it, is it effective? I just wanted to get some, okay?
I'm just going to be honest with you, and part of the reason for putting that information back out is just to remind parents that there is a curfew.
Absolutely.
And that if your 14-year-old is out, then you probably need to know where they are, if it's after 11 o'clock, 8 o'clock, there are some neighborhood, there are some cities, if you go up to National Harbor after 8 o'clock, you can't be in that area without an adult. I know the beach is partnering that now, and again, but it's hard, because again, what it requires is a law enforcement officer to encounter a juvenile, find out what that person's age is, and then obviously, that juvenile is going to have to be taken to that juvenile is going to have to be taken to their parent, and then the parent addressed about where you are with that. So, you know, one of the things that we've instructed the officers to do is when they come encounter with that, obviously, we're going to cite the juvenile for being out of the curfew and address the parent. And again, if it's a situation where they know it, where knowingly allowing it to happen, then you can technically charge them with contributing the links of reminder. And so we're going to use all the tools that we have at our disposal. What we want is, we want parents to be responsible for where their kids are, knowing where they are. You know, it's one thing to be in your front yard and playing, you know, or in a neighbor's house, but, you know, you know, our folks are all around town right now. And, you know, when we look at our neighborhoods, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and we get that video of somebody pulling on door handles, oftentimes it is one of our young folks that are out of the curfew. And so again, just asking folks to take responsibility for their kids, that's it. And that's the part of reeducating people, the same way with the mask. No, you can't wear a mask in public. Obviously, we don't want an officer walking up on a person that has medical conditions or religious exemption or something of that nature. But outside of that, you are not to be wearing masks in public with your hood up, looking like you're ready to go into robbing establishment. It makes everybody uncomfortable, and it's one of those things that we're really cracking down on as well.
Thank you.
Counselman Thomas.
Thank you, sir. I'm really impressed with you saying you're going to open up another class this year for trainees. Could you, first question is, can you address the staffing issue, update us on the staffing issue, both for administrative and for street? And tell us where we're headed? And the second question would be on what you think is gang-related in this information?
So I'll start with the first in order. So today, we graduated eight new police officers who are graduating this evening in New York Town. They will begin field training tomorrow. We've had one additional individual that came to us from another department lateral then. We anticipate sending at least 15 individuals to our next academy. We're approaching the deadline for them to be able to go into orientation, so we're hoping, we're hoping to get two more into this to give us that total complement. Our goal was to be able to send 20. We're, unfortunately, it's not as easy, it's not as easy to get people as folks think, and nobody's really knocking the door down to come and do this. I mean, again, let's just look at what's going on in California right now. And I don't want to get into it. It's just, it's hard, it's hard to be able to recruit people to come in and do this. And so right now, I would tell you, we're about in the same space that we were in. We've not made any tremendous gains at knocking, knocking that number down. We've slowed it, folks, we've had some retirements, obviously, but we've kind of slowed that conversation a little bit, but at some point in time, for everybody, it's time for me to move on. So again, you just make preparation for that. As it relates to our civilian staff, our professional support staff, where we, some of our key positions have been advertised, and we're shaping for employment for that now, working with city HR as of late last week to get several positions changed over to augment our sworn police staff. And so we're hoping to have those, hopefully done by the end of the month to be able to get those started to be advertised. As it relates to gang issues, gang issues is a problem, and it is prevalent within our city. However, not all of our issues that we've had here lately have been related to gang-related issues. And I try as much as possible, when there is a gang nexus, to tell you it's a gang nexus. The situation that took place in Capitol Manor has a high probability that has a gang nexus to that. But most of the other issues, none of the homicides that we've had this year have a gang nexus. It has, it has been relatively, I'll just say, you know, there's certain words I don't like to say because they tick up, tick down in the summertime, but it's been, as it relates to that. And there's a lot of things that go, factors that go into that, because we've had a lot of folks out there trying to intervene in this violence and having conversations and things of that nature. So there are parts of some of the stuff that we are doing that I will say that is working. And again, not just on the police department, but with our other community groups being involved in mediating through the violence. But we do have gangs in our city. I would never tell you that we don't. Most of them are homegrown, neighborhood against neighborhood, and they change every day. And they are ultra-hard to get on top of because they are very, so much different than what we think about in the traditional stance of gangs where there's a hierarchy. There's not a real hierarchy in any of this, and so it makes it difficult to figure out exactly who's where. And then the other part is they morph all the time. One minute they're this, call this, the next week they're calling something else. And so it's always a constant of trying to stay on top or at least close as they make their morph, that we're still being able to be able to track, drop social media, change this, change that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. This was a very optimistic report, and there's a lot of sense of security coming from these new measures that you're taking. I'm eager to communicate them to the public, and I'm sure that your social media has been doing that. I know I follow it, and you guys do a very good job with your social media. Are we using our, engaging with our community engagement officers to report this to civic leagues, giving them an idea of exactly what these new programs are, or even emailing civic leagues so that they can share it with their members? We have so many active civic leagues. I really would like to know if we're getting the messaging out as efficiently as we should. I will certainly share this myself, and I'm sure everyone on council will be happy to share some of these details about these particular programs. So I think it's so important that people know as much as we can possibly communicate about the measures that you're taking to increase that sense of security.
Yes, ma'am. So yes, we're trying to educate the CED officers about that so that, again, when they go, they're able to, one, pull the stats for that particular area, report out on what's going on, along with the initiatives. Obviously, I have a quarterly forum that is next month that will be coming out. Date to be determined, that I encourage folks to come to. Unfortunately, I get the same people all the time.
Yeah.
Right? And then I even take it a step further, that I have a, started a monthly virtual meeting for just presidents, vice presidents, that's the fourth Thursday at 6:00 every month. And it's through Zoom, and it's to do just this. As a chief, I want to know what the issues are, and I want to be able to point to report back, hey, you tell me an issue today, next month I want to be able to call, if not sooner, be able to say, hey, last week, last month you told me about this, this is what we've done to address that particular issue, so that folks know that we are just getting this stuff and nothing's being done. We hear a lot. We hear a lot. We get a lot of problems that get thrown at us, but honestly, we are working through these things as fast as we can. But, you know, the other part of it, as soon as we get one done, here's another one. So there's plenty of work to go around.
And just to follow up, I do absolutely applaud you. I know that you communicate with, in your own department and project out to the city in so many different ways. I guess what I would be happy to see is maybe if we could do that also for you on the city end or as councilmembers to just share the word of these specific programs, because they're very interesting. I mean, there's a lot of interesting strategy involved here, and I think it creates a good conversation for us to say, this is how Portsmouth is being creative. So I look forward to doing that.
Yeah, and I'll just tell you, feedback-wise, I'm not so ego-driven that I can't take advice. So if somebody has, you get something from someone that they think is working well in another city, not saying it's going to be great here, or not saying we're going to implement it, but I would love to hear about it. And again, it's, again, public safety is everybody's responsibility. And so we are trying to be as collaborative as possible as it relates to attacking these issues.
Counselwoman Hubel, then, then Counselwoman Thomas.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So you asked for advice, I'm going to give you some.
Mm-hmm.
And this is piling on to what Counselwoman Bryant talked about. So your problem-solving projects, let's say you have an officer that's picked something in Churchland, making sure that your community guys and frankly, us, understand what those things are, because there's half a dozen civic leagues in Churchland. And so your guys go and rattle off the stats, it would be helpful, I think, to communicate if Officer Jenkins is working on some issue in Churchland, that those civic leagues all understand Officer Jenkins is working on something in Churchland, to give them a heads up and maybe to be able to help you with, you know, feedback or information. So I offer that to you. And then on the SAVE unit, you mentioned here that you're working to identify the individuals and then connect them with intervention programs, which I assume is through Portsmouth United.
Correct.
Can you speak to the, how the grassroots thing inside Portsmouth United is working to help you guys do this connection of city resources to kind of get in front of the problems, or maybe after the problem has occurred, to help recover from the problems?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a number of things that we, of our nonprofits that have done. So like, for instance, we had one of our nonprofits that, for several weeks, did community cleanups in some of our housing areas, and at the end was able to pay these kids for work. Believe it or not, those initiatives, when you have a kid that's out for money, for whatever reason, those things, small things like that, investments, may deter that kid from getting into something that probably was mischievous or criminal in behavior. Places like our boxing partner at Brick House Boxing, we're taking some of our troubled youth and letting them go in and punch a bag, or partnership with the YMCA, we've given memberships, giving folks an opportunity to be able to go in and, you know, play basketball. You know, over at Mr. Swinson's place, where he now has a basketball court, and every day I've driven past him, there are kids out there playing basketball. It's really about giving them some things to do, but also we've had opportunities to do crisis stabilization, where we've had a victim of a crime that, for us as a police department, what we're saying at Portsmouth United, hey, for this person's safety, we need to be able to look at moving this person or putting them up in a hotel for a couple of days. Not something that, as a police department, we've ever had, we've ever had the benefit of doing, but of course, we're making the best of the resources that we do have to be able to continue along with this, and it's helped us. And I'll be honest with you, I've told folks that, hey, we can help you, your move may not be to another location in Portsmouth, it may be in Hampton, because at this point, we're about saving your life, your kid's life or your life, and retaliation is real. So it's just a couple of, you know, just, those are just a couple of instances where I know that, you know, sometimes, and again, it's a, it's a double-edged sword in some aspects, but there are times when I've had, you know, a community member or one of my violence interrupters calling and say, hey, we had a shooting, police department may not even gotten the call, and they're on their way out there to be able to offer any type of assistance. They're not there to be information providers to us, they're there to be able to mitigate situations in the community. Again, it's a new concept, and there's a lot that's still unknown, but the absence of violence means, should mean your violence interrupter is doing their part, right? That fight that they're, that's happening in the neighborhood, and if they're engaged and intervene in that fight, then that fight probably never turns into that shooting incident. And again, you know, but we never tracked that in the past. We never looked at that from the vantage point that we're looking at it now. So again, new concepts that I believe that are paying dividends, and just like I told, if I say that, you know, the police department is responsible for a 70% reduction in homicide, then I got to own it when it's a 40% increase in homicides. So let's just be honest. And so, you know, at the numbers that we are at, the decreases that we have really is about a testament to Portsmouth gathering together, making the phone calls, showing up to court, prosecuting the crime, all of these things that are going on, but also the grassroots folks really getting in and dealing with some of our root cause issues. So I like to think that it's working.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Counselwoman Thomas, stand in.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, Councilman Hubel's question was similar, and I was going to ask more so in terms of our, the data that we're gathering, and have we shared or is our, we met yesterday with the Crime and Gun Violence Task Force, and have they been made aware of this dashboard? For example, they were asking yesterday, kind of drilling down to the individual neighborhoods to understand that certain neighborhoods might need different solutions, and I see that you're tracking this by districts and then by neighborhoods. So I think this type of information is very useful to that group as well for helping them come up with their overall comprehensive plan in that manner. So have they, are they looped in on this?
Yeah, so part of the reason that this was created was because of that.
That task force, okay.
From our very initial meeting, after, you know, a couple of, I think it was one or two meetings, from that, I told them that I would get this built. And so, you know, that's all happened here within a relatively short time as it relates to technology and getting it implemented. But, you know, we're, so I hope that they're aware, because it's up for them, this is, they're part of the reason that it was built, so they could be educated on what our crime looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor.
At the same task force that Councilman Thomas just mentioned, there was talk of Not everybody sets a computer at home, and sometimes if you go to our website, as good as it is, it's kind of hard to find things. So I would like to see this, if possible, on an application. Most people got cell phones, not everybody's got a desktop.
I think we can work that out. Again, the end goal still is for us to make a, you know, the recommendation from Bloomberg is for us to make a comprehensive application that's all resources together that is going to encompass all of that information. And, you know, again, that's part of having, so if people know where to go and get the information that they need, yeah, we're committed to trying to simplify as much as possible. I want to take that.
App would be great.
I didn't know how, yeah, so, yes, sir. We'll work on it.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Great job, man, for you and your team.
Great job.
We're really excited about the progress you're making. Couple of things, though, I wanted to kind of share, and I would ask that you could help us understand. You had talked about at some point, I know when we would come into the forums, there may be an opportunity to bring in admin folks that are not sworn police officers for administrative, like, calls on car accidents and things like that. Are you still considering doing something like that?
Yes, sir, that, those are part of the position changes.
Okay.
One of the things that, and of course, we tried to do them without losing positions, but also not causing any adverse change to the budget.
Got you.
So we had some positions, if you remember, right after the tragic incident in Virginia Beach, we staffed up and created a number of part-time security officer positions with the thought process that we would go in and put one into all of our buildings. Well, we did not have the success in getting those positions filled, so they just kind of hung out.
Got it.
What we're, obviously, what we're doing now is in the process of changing those to public safety officers. And so those individuals will be the ones that will go out and address those other issues that don't necessarily require gun embattlement. issues that don't necessarily require a gun and badge. Right now, we're about to deploy our police cadets and they will actually start responding to some of those vehicle crashes here in the coming weeks. They're about, they're finishing up training and we're waiting for their vehicle that you'll see, it'll be white vehicle with police cadet on the side. I don't even know if it says police cadet, just might say cadet. We want to make the difference in between. And they'll have amber lights, but they'll be the individuals that will be responding and taking those reports and, you know, clearing vehicle crashes and things of that nature so we can free our officers to continue patrol and address some of the other issues that we're looking at.
Couple of more.
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, and maybe you can educate me, in order for you to have competent and capable enforcement in doing your policing, you also need to have a partnership with prosecutions. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
And so one of the things that I'm hearing in the community from several lawyers that I've talked to, and this may not be something that you've heard, but there's an attitude by some of the folks in our community or outside of our community who believe that they can come to our community and commit gun charges or violations or crimes and they won't be prosecuted. And the reason I say that is because in order for public safety and for us to have accountability, those two must go hand in hand. Is that fair?
Very fair, sir.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that the community understands that policing is one arm.
Right.
Prosecution is another arm. And if we don't have, if we have effective policing and we bring folks forward and the prosecution doesn't meet the policing and doing the job, everybody has a job to do. And as citizens and as elected leaders, we must require all of our individuals who are a part of that process to do their job. So just want to make sure, I don't know if you've heard some of that, but I've heard some of that. It's a little bit disturbing to me from a standpoint, no one should think that they can come to the city of Portsmouth and do crimes and not pay for it, period.
Yes, sir.
The other thing that I wanted to mention was, we talked about getting more of the message out. We do have, to my knowledge, a citywide civic league organization, do we not?
Yes.
Okay. So perhaps setting up a meeting with that citywide civic league organization, make a big deal about it, we've got a big reveal, we want to put information, we could get more people in one room at one time and then afterwards, after you demonstrate this new tool that we have, perhaps we could have them engage in a conversation. And we certainly could have the city attorney present and others. I think when we aggregate and we bring more people together, it creates a sense of cohesion and it also lets everyone add to the conversation. I love the idea of meeting with civic leagues one-on-one, but whenever we can get a group together, I think you can come and circle around a singleness of purpose and a singleness. And that can then spill out into the greater community because I've, if my recollection is correct, most of those individuals are the presidents, vice presidents, or sometime the members show up, but most of those are the, going to be the leadership of the civic leagues.
Right.
So we'll work on helping that take place. The other comment or question I had is related to, so are we having challenges? Because I know some of, some of our sister cities was having some challenges with, I guess, retail theft. And are we having problems? I didn't really look at it in depth on your dashboard and other things that you showed on your statistics. Is our retail crime such that, I know we, of course, have to address it, but has it gotten to a point where we need to do some different things to get it under control?
Yeah, so retail crime for us is probably one of the bigger, had been one of the biggest crime drivers for us over the last several years. Our store, Supercenter Walmart, last year had a, over a $4 million shrink from theft. Our ABC store on London Boulevard, prior to it changing over to a counter store, was the number one theft store in the state for us as a region. Hampton Roads as a region had the highest number of thefts as it related to ABC thefts than the rest of the state combined. And so, again, that is why you see or saw us advocate or in particular, the chiefs advocate to Virginia ABC Board to do more as it relates to assisting us with, you know, being more proactive with safeguarding their merchandise as well. You can't necessarily put the most high-dollar value thing at the door even though there is a such thing as crime prevention by design. And so that's, it's unfortunate that we have to have a counter store that folks can't browse around and look at, but I could tell you, as the chief has made my numbers go down tremendously and I'll take it as it relates to Walmart. It's the same thing, they got away from the self-checkout and now you're required to go through the line. It's unfortunate that you have to do that, but in talking with the managers just yesterday, they've experienced a tremendous decrease. And what people don't realize is what happens when Walmart's not there. And now you further create, you talk about more food deserts and things of that nature. So it is important for us to look at that and how retail theft affects us. It's just as if it's, as bad of an issue for us as if it was a violent incident because it causes businesses not to be able to survive when they lose merchandise.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And Vice Mayor, go ahead.
The follow-up on what the chief is saying about retail theft, what happens to, it gets so high that retailers are putting things in cases where you have to go get a clerk to open the case to buy something.
Yes, sir.
Well, what happens there is the consumer doesn't want to go through that rigmarole, so they go to another place, another store where things aren't under lock and key to buy their merchandise, which hurts the retailer, hurts us with the sales tax revenue. So it's really an awful thing. And it's got to be gotten under control or we could possibly lose some retailers.
Yeah, there were a number of things that we did legislatively as a state that really hurt us. And one of the things is we increased petty larceny from $250 to now over $1,000. And again, those things really hurt us, in my opinion, as it relates to combating crime and petty larceny. $1,000 is a relatively high threshold.
Councilman Hugo.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I shared this at the crime task force, but I want to do it here because I want to shout out chief and his folks. They have implemented this QR code program where his officers go into the retail places and scan their QR codes. I was at a coffee with the cops at the Wawa out on Victory Boulevard a couple of months ago and the Wawa security folks were there. And so we spoke about it and they were very complimentary to the chief and his team. What that's causing is our officers going into the retail stores and forming a relationship with the people in the stores who now know who their local policeman is and, you know, getting to know each other and having that kind of impact and presence in the retail locations. That's helping store security by knowing that the chief's folks are going to be in the store sometime during their watch. And so I know you've given credit to one of your officers that came up with the idea, but it's clearly a good thing. It's, and I think it's, it's having an impact, but importantly, it's also, you know, closing that relationship with our retailers to know that we care.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Chief, one other thing I did want to, on behalf of our council, I wanted to congratulate you and your department on the accreditation you're working on. I've listened to a lot about it and I've read about it and I just want to ask you two things. I do believe I understand what the benefit to the department is and certainly your officers, but also how many, how many cities are accredited under COLIA in Hampton Roads?
Every city in Hampton Roads is accredited.
So we're the only city that's not accredited?
Correct.
Okay. So can you just, I know you articulated that, but as a, as a police officer, a career police officer, can you articulate to us what that means to you?
Well, to be honest, sir, I will tell you, when you start talking about challenges and why people don't come and those small things that people say to lessen your role or make you feel small, things like, hey, why would you even go there? They're not even accredited. Or, you know, those small things that really and truly, when you're talking about building a team and a sense of pride within an organization. And again, we didn't just get accredited, we're getting advanced accredited. There are only other, two other departments in this area that are advanced accredited. And so again, it is about showing what we already knew. We knew where we were good, the police department. It's really about showing and proving to ourselves that we are what we say we are. And so I'm really hoping that it will instill a sense of pride. You know, we're going to post it on our cars, we're going to post it on the, on our website, we're going to post it everywhere that we can post it because it is a big deal and it's something to be celebrated. And, but just because we get it, now we have to maintain it.
Right.
They give us a baseline on what's a good standard. The way that you get better is you look at how to improve that standard.
Right.
So if they say do it one time, let's do it three times. And again, those things make us better as a police department. So we're really looking at how those standards can make us an even better police department.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your continued leadership.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Moody.
One more question, and maybe this question's to Dr. Coleman. The retention bonuses and recruiting bonuses, when are they scheduled to go into effect? Is that July the 1st? Are they implemented now? Do we have a date on that?
So Vice Mayor Moody, the retention bonuses and sign-on bonuses, they're in effect. So it's not a start or stop date with that. The increase that's been proposed and was incorporated in the new budget, obviously that's July 1 when that will take effect for the increase. But the chief has reined to conduct sign-on bonuses, to issue retention bonuses, you know, at his discretion. If there are police officers who pass through the HR department and say, hey, I'm looking to go to another city, again, the chief has the autonomy to say, you know, we would like to retain you, you know, this bonus will be, you know, implemented at whatever time.
Okay, so the eight recruits that became police officers today, is it accurate to say that their check is in the mail?
That I'm not sure. Do they have a sign-on bonus or retention bonus? I don't believe so, but.
Their retention bonuses were really identified for those individuals who were eligible to retire.
Correct.
That was to be able to get them.
Understand that. How about the sign-in bonus, recruiting?
Yeah, the sign-in bonuses will be presented after they complete field training. So, yeah, they just, right now, they, we got to make sure they're going to stay with us.
Okay.
Right. We're going to make sure they stay, get through, get cut loose and then they're eligible for the sign-on bonus. Obviously, we have a hiring bonus that should be paid to an individual who recruited them and that doesn't require them to go through field training. That's done just because they signed and we hired them, they should be compensated for that.
And I think there was a time period where they had to stay on the force for a certain number of months, years to obtain that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, thanks, you, man. Keep up the great work, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Dr. Coleman, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So for tonight's agenda, Mayor, we have two public hearings that we will hear. One is a request for use permit operate, to operate shipping container and chassis storage in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The second use permit request is to operate an event space banquet hall in the general mixed-use zoning district. So those will be your only two public hearings for this evening.
Sure.
Five ordinances that we will hear. The first is related to exceptions, accepting of additional funds from the Home Investment Partnership Program. The next is the accepting of funds from the Beasley Foundation. And the next is accepting of funds for the Child and Adult Food Care Program. Next, we have acceptance of stormwater local assistance funds from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. And the final ordinance that we will hear will be accepting a grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. That's what we have in the deal, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any council liaison reports?
I have a comment on the council liaison report, but also a question for Dr. Coleman. The Beasley Foundation grant, you know, that, that equipment that it's funding, it's pediatric care equipment, is that, is that new equipment for us? Is that a new service that we're able to provide?
I'm not certain if it's a new service. It does, it is for the prehospital care program, the pediatric service. I'm not for certain if it's a new service or a continued service.
Okay.
I can find that out, but I'm not for certain.
Sure. If you don't mind, it would be interesting to share that that would be something new that our team is able to.
Good.
Offer. And then, Mayor, if I still can.
Yes.
Offer a liaison report.
Sure.
Councilman Hugo and I are looking to continue our partnership with the school board this summer. Our last meeting was canceled, however, we've requested to continue meeting through the summer to continue to build our efforts to establish ways that we can help the school district with attendance issues in more creative thoughtful ways. So we're looking forward to continuing that conversation and being a little creative in how we do it.
Any other liaison reports? Seeing none, then that concludes our public work session for today and this meeting is adjourned. I will see everyone in the chamber at 7:05 PM.